Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission on Monday, January 22, 2018. The roll call, please.
Chair Commissioners, Asatrian is absent. Kalfayan?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Wu?
President.
President Michaels.
Present.
The agenda for the January 22, 2018 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on or before Friday, January 19, 2018. Item two introductions and presentations at A is recognition of Magic Jump Rentals for their support and sponsorship of various CSP special events, programs and activities.
Good afternoon, President Michaels, Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Melanie Amazospin, Community Services Coordinator. On behalf of our department, we're proud to recognize Magic Jump Rentals for their continued support and generosity with providing jumpers at our special events, some of which include Extravaganza, National Night Out and our inaugural Fall Festival. Having the jumpers during our special events really bring a lot of joys to the kids and families attending the events and add to our motto of Parks Make Life Better. We thank you and we hope to continue our partnership with Magic Jump Rentals. And on behalf of Magic Jump Rentals here today is President and CEO, Arthur Bagumian. We'd like to invite Arthur Bagumian to receive his certificate. And President Michaels, if you'd have the honor of please presenting us with the certificate.
Certainly. The Commission would like to present a certificate of appreciation. The Community Services and Parks Department recognizes Magic Jump Rentals for its continued support and sponsorship of various City of Glendale special events, programs and activities. Your continued sponsorship and support have been instrumental in enabling the Community Services and Parks Department to provide exceptional customer service and programming to the residents of Glendale and the greater Glendale community. It's my privilege to present this with you. To you.
Well, on behalf of everybody at Magic Jump Rentals, I'd like to thank the wonderful city of Glendale for the recognition and express our continued support and partnership with the wonderful city of Glendale throughout the years to come and for the community and Parks and Recs Division. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next on the agenda is item three, upcoming council agenda items.
President Michaels, members of the Commission, there are no council agenda items for the next month. We'll come back to you during our February meeting with any items that will be taken to council.
Next is item four, Commission staff comments.
Are there any comments from the Commissioners?
No.
President Michaels, if I may, I'd like to go over some of the upcoming events that are put on by our department.
Certainly.
Thank you. The 2018 homeless count will take place on January 23, 2018 from 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. and on January 24, 2018 from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. There's a workshop regarding Alzheimer's disease. It's called Effective Communication Strategies at Spar Heights Community Center. That'll take place on January 24 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. We're offering Parents Night Out at Spar Heights Community Center on January 26 from 6:30 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. At Brand Park, we have Brand Habitat Restoration Work Day on January 27 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Another Alzheimer's Disease Workshop, this time entitled Understanding and Responding to Dementia-Related Behavior at the Adult Recreation Center on January 31 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. We have a Teen Night Out at Pacific Community Center on February 2 from 5:30 p.m. to 9: p.m. A River Walk Work Day at Glendale Narrows Riverwalk on February 3 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Club Maple is having their Valentine's Day Celebration at Maple Park Community Center on February 8 from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Trails and Open Spaces offering a night lecture series entitled The Weird and Wonderful World of Bats at Duke Mage and Wilderness Park on February 9 from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Campfire Program entitled City Wildlife is taking place at Pacific Park on February 10 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Registrations for Spring Day Camps begins on February 12 at 9:00 a.m. at Pacific Community Center and Spar Heights Community Center. Seniors are having their Valentine's Day Lunch at the Adult Recreation Center and at Spar Heights Community Center on February 14 from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Friday Night Lights is offered at Verdugo Skate Park on February 16 from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Another Teen Night Out at Pacific Community Center on February 16 from 5:30 p.m. to 9: p.m. And we're offering a workshop regarding college scholarships for high school seniors at Pacific Community Center on February 16 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. A Wilderness Work Day at Duke Mage and Wilderness Park, February 17 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Spirit of Haiku is being offered at Brand Park Tea House on February 18 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. February 19 is a city holiday, President's Day. All city offices will be closed, all community centers will also be closed except for rentals, and there will be no congregant meals offered that day. CDBG Advisory Committee is having an all-day special meeting on February 23. The exact time is to be determined. And then we're back here for another Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission Special Meeting on February 26 at 2:30 p.m. For more information, the public can call 818-548-2000 or visit www.glandelca.gov/residents/calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
The next item is item five, Oral Communications. I believe there is one card.
I have two cards. I'll call Stephen Meek.
Just for clarification, the second one is for item 7A.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Meek, Vice President of Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, but I'm here as a, just on my own and wanted to bring up a couple of things that I wanted to make aware, make you aware of. I've been to a lot of the Parks meetings and community meetings and I would like to see if your commission could urge the City Council to have the Central Park planning include your commission and the Arts and Culture Commission to work together to plan the, forward, plan that park. I think it's important to have the arts and the parks working with the community economic development. Second, Palmer Park. I'm not sure who to talk to, so I'm bringing it to you. There's been numerous things about the basketball courts and the skateboards doing it in the evenings. Can the Commission speak with the City Council or the city to just have the police come there as a drive-by, not even a drive-by, stop-by at the time when those lights go out and they should stop playing, just on a regular basis for a few weeks, just to get them to, the people that are playing, to understand they're supposed to stop. Number three, out of left field, Sears is closing a lot of the buildings that they own, the stores. Would it be possible to go into negotiations or just to speak with Sears Company to see if they're planning to close this store? If so, talking to the city to possibly take that area and make it a community park for all these new buildings downtown? There's several ways to do that. You could make the building into community center. You could keep the parking structure, make the top floor a park, but just as an idea for future parks in Glendale. And that's the only things I have. Do you have any questions for me about these things?
Commissioners?
I was wondering if you could clarify your first item. I was not sure what you meant exactly.
I've been to the community meetings they had this past week for the Central Park. It's the extension from the Paseo One brand into, next to the library and the Armenian Museum and the Art Adult Recreation Center. It didn't seem like there was a real concept for the park as yet, and I think it seems to be led by the economic development. And I think it's really important for the parks and the arts and culture to be part of that since it seems like this area is, that we're discussing, Central Park, will be an arts hub and a city park. They've suggested they want to put in a playground. The playground could be something that's artistic, not just a little jumper thing that they buy from some company. Make it nice like the one at Highland Park on York. The slides and the jump climber is like a big snake that they slide down and the climber is like a big tree trunk that they can climb through and around. Make it interesting to look at, not just functional. And I think that the parks and the arts and culture should be a definite part of the planning of this park as it goes forward, plus trying to make the events in the park to bring people into that park. Because I think it'll, and other, to make it vibrant, your commission and the Arts and Culture Commission, I think, really need to be involved in it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My question is, are you against the Armenian Museum?
Not at all. I think the museum is great. I just think the way it was presented to the community at those meetings were, left a lot of questions in people's minds of, what are we doing here? What do you mean by expanding this? What do you mean by the forest preserve? And then when they start asking questions, you get, oh, we're going to keep the trees that are there and we're going to take out those parking lots. When I went to Fremont Park, they took us through the parks. The parks did a great job explaining to people what we want to do. And I just think they know how to make these meetings, community meetings, to get the input from people, whereas the economic development people did not quite get that. And I know that the Thursday meeting, we had about 200 people there and many of them wanted to say and give more information and input about what they like, what they would like to have in the park, but it wasn't, filling out little, they called them leaves, didn't really allow them to voice those communications and get that across to people. But I think that museum, the arts and culture as in the library and the Adult Recreation Center, oh, my time's up, would really bring things in. I think we need art in that park to attract people, to bring them in. And we need events, but it has to be a long-term thing, not just, you know, one event. Somebody needs to keep it going to make that a vibrant park.
Thank you.
Okay. I attended the meeting on Saturday as an individual and I do see the need for the Parks Department and the Commission to weigh in on that process and I will be looking for ways to forward that collaboration.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes.
President Michaels, members of the Commission, even though economic development is the lead department on the project, we do have a committee which consists of someone from the Library Department, myself, from Parks, Mr. Panosian from Parks, Mr. Peter Verheilig from Parks, and we're working with both Economic Development and SWA to plan the park. So we will bring the project to Commission and I'm sure to the Arts Culture Commission for your review and approval.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next is item 6A, under Consent Items, Approval of the Minutes of the Commission Regular Meeting Held on November 20, 2017.
Okay, I will move it.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioners, Asatrian is absent. Kalfayan?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
President Michaels?
Yes.
Item seven, Action Items at A, Motion to Provide Feedback Regarding Palmer Park Neighborhood Concerns.
Okay, President Michaels, members of the Commission, I have a short presentation in regards to Palmer Park. I know we've received a few emails and letters regarding Palmer Park and the security of Palmer Park and so on. I do have Officer Cozes here from Glendale Police Department to answer any law enforcement specific type questions. So if you have any questions, let us know. I'll be more than happy to answer. So the, let me give you a background of the park. It was bought by the city in 1949. It's a 2.8 acre neighborhood park. Between November 2014 and 2015, the city went ahead and replaced the playground. We did have a playground project which included a brand-new playground and rubberized surfacing. The revitalization project was completed in January of 2017, so it's been about a year that we've have the park open. Community outreach, we had 11 different types of community meetings, workshops, excuse me, within half-mile radius of the project site. Those meetings started in 2011. We went ahead and talked to the PTAs at the local schools, Roosevelt Middle School, Muir Elementary and Horace Mann Elementary, the Merchants Association, the Homeowners Association and the seniors in the area and basically, community as a whole. We had a few workshops at the park onsite and the result of the meetings resulted in basically a park designed by the community for the community. The five major items that they wanted was an expanded basketball court, a skate park element, restrooms upgraded, picnic shelter upgraded and an expanded waiting pool. And we delivered those five items to the community. The scope of work, more in detail, we have a new park entry design and we replaced the fence and the gate along Palmer Drive, improved landscaping and irrigation system which included drought tolerant plants, energy efficient security lighting, our restrooms were upgraded, we had ADA upgrades and all the sinks and toilets were all upgraded. We had a new taller play area. We have a shade structure, enormous shade structure. We have outdoor fitness equipment along the walk path. The community garden was upgraded. We went ahead and put out 50 community garden plots. From 36, we increased it to 50. We added a skate park element and of course, the basketball court, a full basketball court. We did have two halves, but we have a one full basketball court and one half basketball court. The entire project cost a little over $3 million. $925,000 was funded by CDBG. $980 was from a State of California housing grant and the rest was funded by Development Impact, DIF fees. The concerns raised by the community basically was, is the basketball court, it's too noisy. We did have two neighbors call it in and we also had a letter submitted by the neighbors during construction that was back in November of 2016 regarding the noise that the basketball courts would have when the park is open. We also have 14 calls that we've received this past year. Why are we turning off the lights at 8:00 p.m.? That the park is open till 10:00, so the basketball court should be also open till 10 o'clock. In terms of the skate park, also, two neighbors had called it in regarding it being too noisy with the skaters doing their stunts, the wheels hitting the concrete, and also complaints, why are the lights being turned off too early at 8:00 a.m.? We had another complaint regarding the separate use of skate times. She, the parent had a taller, but not a taller, a younger child around eight years old that wanted to skate, but the skate park is overrun by teens and, you know, kids that are 14 all the way up to 17, 18 years old. So we did post sometime, we would like to post some times eventually and separate the hours of operation for the skate, skate park. Few calls for the parking lot. The waiting pool, we've noticed kids were jumping on the cover, so staff noticed this. So what we did is we drained the waiting pool and we're keeping it empty for the offseason. And another complaint we had was reservation of the picnic tables. Why we reserve the picnic tables Saturdays and Sundays to birthday parties? There's nowhere for the park owners or the park users to sit. And then we had a one call regarding drug use by youth in the park. The actions that we took last, this last year, the basketball court and skate park hours were reduced from 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We went ahead and posted signs notifying park patrons of the early closure. We also, before the construction was completed, we went ahead and tinted six light poles, the new security lighting light poles, to minimize light at the skate park and the basketball court. When we opened the park, those tints lasted probably two, three weeks. They climbed the light pole and scratched off the tint. So we decided to install a separate light meter, a light timer, I'm sorry, to turn off the lights at 8:00 p.m. That cost us about $7,600 where the tinning was part of the project, cost 600. As mentioned earlier, we posted basketball courts and we posted signs on the basketball court and the skate park specifying the hours. Coco and his team planted shrubs against the south side and the west side of the park to help with the noise. During time, hopefully that'll grow with the rain that we'll hopefully get within the next couple of months, it will grow and that will help us out. Instead of providing or installing chain netting, we went ahead and installed nylon netting. And we also requested the police department to increase their patrols in the area. So the next slide, we have a police call log for Palmer Park. This includes both 911 calls and calls, basically emergency calls and non-emergency calls. From 2014 to 2017, one, the most, the highest number is, you know, a disturbance which can lead to, you know, a minor disturbance, a major disturbance, and we had 18 calls for Palmer Park in 2017. The next, we had, I mean, if you total them up, I'm sorry, total them up, so in 2014, we had 89, 2015, we had 116, 2016, we had 47, and that was because the park was closed. And then in 2017, we had 108. If you have any questions regarding the calls for service, Officer Cozes is here to answer any questions. But the next slide, we wanted to basically show you a comparison of total police calls at parks similar to the size of Palmer Park. Emerald Dial, excuse me, we had 10, Fremont 103, Glen Oaks 48 and so on. Palmer was 108, Palancony 37 and Verdugo Park 122. Moving forward, there are some options that the Parks Commission can consider. We can close the park at sunset or at 8:00 p.m., remove the half basketball court which is closest to Oak Ridge, staff the park seven days a week, five to 10. This will cost us $35,000. It's not budgeted and it will need council approval. Or we could hire security seven days a week, five to 10, with an estimated cost of $40,000 and this also needs council approval. From a staff's end, these, these recommendations or these considerations, we'd rather keep everything status quo and work with our police department on enforcement than, you know, closing the park at 8:00 o'clock or at sunset. Most of our park facilities, actually all of our park facilities close at 10:00, except for our historic sites such as Casa Adobe, Verdugo Adobe. The only park that closes at sunset is Mayor's Park and Lower Shaw Canyon Park. Rest of our parks close at 10:00 o'clock. With that being said, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. With that being said, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from commissioners?
Not at this time.
I have two cards, so I'll call Kay Hostetler first.
Good afternoon, President Michaels and Commissioners. And my name is Kay Hostetler, and I do live next door to Palmer Park. We share a fence. Thank you very much for asking for this report and for staff for preparing it regarding our neighbors' concerns. I am really glad to see there are some options, and also to see what the cost of those options would be for consideration, because I know we really need the park in our neighborhood. My major goal has been to request endorsement of the hours that are posted at the park. The two signs in the skate park and two signs in the basketball court are beautiful signs. They fit with the Glendale City logo. However, they're not reflective, so you can't see it once the park is dark. And people do come into those areas to play after 8:00. Activity at the basketball courts in the skate park area must stop at 8:00 PM. The timer on the lights right now needs to be reset. When I was there on Saturday night, the skate park area goes off at 8:09, and the basketball area goes off at 8:12. I have charts to give you that show the activity at the park. Rarely is the quiet, is the park quiet at 8:00 PM. Yet, when our former director, Jess Duran, presented the final plan for the Palmer Park at your July 20th meeting in 2015, at minute 36 of the tape of the video of the meeting, he stated, quote, "There would be no lighting at the basketball courts, and that's intentional." He went on to say, "We agree. We don't want basketball taking place until late at night," unquote. In late 2016, I saw the courts lit up. I sent an email to ONIC because the lights were so bright that any of us could have sat there and read a book, or students could have studied in any way they wanted to and been able to read their phones or whatever. The lights do go off after 8:00, but people still play ball, and they use the perimeter lights, and the backboards are white, so they get, they know exactly where the backboards are. People often arrive long after 8:00 PM to play. When others use the park to play ball and skate, there's no chance to concentrate if you're on my property and outdoors. You know, going to and from the car, but coming in the driveway, I can hear the noise. It can be heard on the sidewalks all around me, and I have been walking in the neighborhood, so I know that. We can hear it in front of the houses that are next to the park. The clacking of the skateboards and the pounding of the basketball continues when people are there. Often, it's not a group of people playing basketball. In fact, if they were, I think it might be more quiet because the basketball would be passed. Instead, it's individuals. Okay, was that my timer? And thank you very much. I do have these to give you, and, because I've been keeping track of the information. Can I have the extra papers to share with other people? Thank you for your time today. If I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Baldwin?
My name is Mary Baldwin. I was born in Glendale, near Palmer Park. I remember when it was just one green patch of grass. It has grown over the years, as has Glendale. The problem now is, well, I want to thank you for doing all that you did to Palmer Park. You've constantly refurbished it, you have added to it. The problem is, it's too small a park for too many people, and that is really the problem. You can address all these things, but it's not adding what we really need is more parks. And I know that there is money allotted for South Glendale. We have approached Scott Ochoa and other people with other locations for parks. This is what we need. Palmer Park is just overrun. Even before you refurbished it, it was overrun. And it's a wonderful little respite for our area. It's no longer a respite. It's, it's an activity center. It's not green and quiet, and it's not a meadow. It's not like Silver Lake. So my point is, we just need more parks. We don't need, and we don't need buildings put on other parks to reconfigure the parks. Sorry about that, but that's how I feel. And that's what we need. And I know that you guys work hard to try to find that and would love to recommend that, but we're losing the last open spaces in, in the South Glendale, and that just can't be. Most of the population is there. So if you can, and I'm happy, I know this town like the back of my hand, believe me. I would show you places. I'd be happy to drive you around and show you spots where there would be good spots for like a Shane's Inspiration type of park, which I don't think should be added to Verdugo Park. I think that should be in South Glendale where the need is great. Or a small doggy park, something. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more card. Shirley Hill. Shirley Ann Hill.
Hello, everybody. And I too want to thank you for what you've done, giving us Palmer Park and making it a very beautiful place in many ways. However, I hear so many complaints from the neighbors who are adjacent to Palmer Park. Before your last rehabilitation of the park, there weren't as many complaints, and that's probably because that basketball area was not right up against the side where many of the residents, their homes actually are. They're, they're in an area where when the ball is thrown up, it literally almost pounds off of their homes, it seems. And those are where the complaints are coming from, that it's, they're losing their quality of life. And that's not good when people can't come home from work or whatever and feel relaxed and able to read or sit. Maybe they want to watch a little TV or whatever, and they can't hear. I, I personally, I'm way up on the hill there, and I don't hear it, but I can tell you. I can't imagine hearing "pomp, pomp, pomp" constantly against the side of my house. I think it would drive me crazy. So I'm just here to plead for the neighbors of Adams Hill. I'm a realtor up there, so a lot of them refer to me to, for different things, or if they have a, something that they feel they need to discuss, they may mention it. And I have heard from many about the quality of life disappearing around that area. So please do something, and I, I like where you say you might remove that one new section. I think that was one of the proposals. Am I correct? Yeah, one of them. So that would be my choice, if I had a choice in it, would be, you know, to maybe put it someplace else, or at least not have it right against the neighbors' homes. Thank you very, very much.
Are there any comments from the commissioners?
Guess I'm wondering how much staffing we have at the park presently.
President Michaels, members of the commission, currently, we have one full-time gardener that works Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 2:30. But that gardener also goes to Adams Mini Park and handles Adams Mini Park on a daily basis. So we don't have a employee that's, you know, sitting there watching the park. They're either at different parks, working their route, and coming back to Palmer.
That's in the daytime.
That's in the daytime. After 2:30, we do not have any employees working there. We don't have any recreation programs. It's just an open park where people come and use all the amenities.
Thank you.
If Officer Cozes could come up and talk to us a little bit about the calls for service and the enforcement at Palmer Park.
Thank you, President Michaels, and members of the commission. I'm happy to answer any of the questions, specific questions you might have about the, the calls for services, stats that was provided to you by staff. Generally, Palmer Park doesn't generate more or less than, I think, just based on a feel of it, from my perspective, than any other park, and nothing truly out of the ordinary in any form or fashion. I know there are sensitive issues for some of the neighbors, but it seems to be a pretty normal park by my observations. Now, when I work 6:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, I work Monday through Thursday. I do take time to go through the park and drive through the park. I take my black-and-white. It's an older Chevy Tahoe. Some people might recognize it. It's, I've made a regular stop there. I talk with the gardener staff, who sometimes point things out to me, and I'll, I'll keep note of it, and it's typical, or it matches what staff has received as well as calls for service. And I've taken time to stop and talk and, and talk to parents that are there, talk to little kids that are in the park, talk to the teenage skaters, other people who are working out on, on the southeast corner. There's some of the older teenage skaters have complained that, well, there's four-year-olds kicking a soccer ball through the skate park. So it's a danger for them, too. And so I do my best to do some community policing. That's the unit that I work in. I work on the crime impact team, but we, we interface with the public. We do community policing, so I do a lot of education and outreach.
Specifically, the drive path is a new feature for some of the park designs in Glendale. Is that useful for you to be able to take your black-and-white through the park and be very visible?
The driving path is very useful for us. I use it in every park that has it with my, with my SUV. It works. It, it does cause attention, so, but it's good attention. The park patrons get to see that, oh, the police is present, and not necessarily for something going on in progress as far as the crime goes. But just to come through, wave, smile, say hi. I make it regular stops through Fremont, Carr Park, Palmer, and others that have drive paths. I make it a point to stop and get out and say hi to people, give stickers to kids, talk to homeless that are in our parks, and make sure that everybody's playing by the rules and having a good time.
I know you are on the, the morning or the daytime shift. Is, can we have some direction to the evening shift to come by around 8:00, when the lights are due to turn off and make sure that the, particularly the basketball courts and the skate park are vacated?
Right. During, during those weekdays, during those 6:00 AM to 4:00, 4:00 PM hours, you know, I am around, so I do make it a point to do that stuff. So when, when my partners and I are not on duty, which is typically the evenings and also the weekends, those, that burden lies on patrol officers. So they have, they have been encouraged to make their way through the parks, use the drive path, use it for patrol purposes, and look for anything that they can, look for any activity that they might be able to, to stop or prevent or take enforcement action on. So if there's park rule violations, and typically, those types of rules, if it's an hours-of-use type operation, sorry, hours-of-use type violation, after 10:00 PM, we're looking at a trespass arrest or a violation of trespassing after 10:00 PM. So after the hours of 8:00, 8:00 PM, when the park rule stays that play must stop, the patrol officers will be need to, will need to educate them and tell them that it's a park rule violation. I don't know what tier that lands in. I'll let staff, I'll defer to staff as far as a violation of that park rule over hour and what it could lead to if officers were tried to enforce in a punitive manner versus an educational and outreach, hey, which, which would normally be our patrol officer's response. Hey, guys, you see the sign? It's after 8:00. You got to keep the noise down on the basketball courts and the skate park. That's, that should be our first option from the police department and patrol officers, and we go from there. So sure, yes, we can put that on our hot board, make sure that patrol officers are aware to take a roll-through of Palmer Park after the hours of 8:00 to 10:00 in the evening to, to look at the skate park and the basketball court alike, so. And they'll do that on a priority basis, so if they're unavailable handling emergent calls, then they won't necessarily be there unless a police call is, is made for a specific rule violation. Then officers will respond if they're too busy on emergent stuff to just take a few minutes and drive through a park.
Is there a drug and alcoholic abuse around the neighborhood on Palmer that you have encountered?
Members of the commission, I think that there are some, and I think it's prevalent in, in anywhere we go, even on the sidewalk. So whether people are drinking on sidewalks, or they're drinking at the parks, or whether they believe that marijuana is so legal that they can smoke it anywhere now in California, we do enforce those rules. We do enforce those laws. I haven't seen anything different in Palmer Park than I, than I've seen in any others. So when, when officers, including myself, when I, I've even gone out with my supervisor and a couple of other officers on bicycle patrol specifically for the purpose of looking for gambling, smoking, and drinking in our parks, one, to do an education and outreach campaign with brochures, and then also enforcement. I mean, few and far between do we find somebody actually drinking in a park. Sometimes with smoking, we do find people smoking marijuana. Our officers do use our suspension policy, so when a person is, has an open container or drinking in, in the park, or smoking marijuana, or have, in possession of any other drug, then, then we make sure that we use our suspension policy and follow up later if we ever see the person in the park again to make an arrest for trespass.
Those, those abusers, they not a threat to the neighborhood?
No, I don't think that there's, no, I don't think so.
Separate from this, staff has prepared a report on the suspension policy, but I'd like to ask you if that policy has been working, if there's recommendations to improve it, specifically how it works with tracking repeat offenders or being able to determine if someone has had a previous offense.
I'm sorry, President Michaels, if you wouldn't mind keeping that until the next item, so that we...
Then we may call you up for that item separately.
And I'll be here for that report as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry, sorry, any other questions, President Michaels?
I have one quick question.
Yes.
So based on the log of calls that we have received and been able to keep, keeping track in 2017, I know that there's multiple classification, but is there a way for us to kind of see what time these calls are coming in, so we can kind of see, is it coming in post 8:00 PM? And that's when the bulk of the complaints are coming in, or is it pretty much throughout the day, throughout the week? And I think if that could be done, then it would also further help us to kind of tackle the issue and see that it is definitely a problem between the hours of 8:00, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM on this particular day of the week or what have you. So if that's something that we could be able to kind of narrow down.
Yes, sir. Commissioner member, commission members, staff has been working closely with our crime analyst in the police department and getting this data. I'm sure that they can drill down to days and times at your, at your will, and staff has done that already to get this data. They may have it already. Okay, great, thank you. All right, thank you.
President Michaels, members of the commission, this is an action item. If you do have specific feedback that you would like to go on record, we would ask for a motion and for vote.
One specific question I do have of staff. The proposal was to provide security for the hours of operation. Is there a way to amend that to have a security patrol in the evening hours between, say, 7:00 PM and the close of the park?
Yes, President Michaels, currently, we have two security guards that close our parks at night. They start right about dusk to take care of our dusk parks and then work through 11:00. There's a five-hour minimum to hire a security guard. If we ask the same security company to cycle through back at Palmer Park, we're increasing that time, hence the cost will continue to add on those two individuals, and at the same time, they will not be able to get to the rest of our parks and close them by 10:00, which means we would have to go back and hire a third security person to do the job. Hence, the timing of five hours per security guard and the costs are there for that purpose.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think that's, that will be impossible because we have other parks to look for, so you cannot go with one park only.
Correct. We would amend our current process of security personnel... Correct. We would amend our current process of security personnel closing our parks to have a security guard stationed at this location to alleviate some of the issues that may be happening during the late evening hours.
More specifically, I was looking to see if it could be added, if there was time to add additional patrols to the current schedule. So thank you for that clarification that the current schedule is full.
Correct. I was wondering if there's any signage suggesting that visitors to the park consider the neighbors, you know, that type of thing. Sometimes there'll be signs up in places where it says, please respect our neighbors, need for quiet, that type of thing. I wonder if that might have an impact.
President Michaels, members of the commission, we certainly can look into those types of signs. I know some drive-through, fast food drive-through establishments have those type of signs, turn off your radio, lower your noise. We can look into that and look at different locations throughout the park.
And also maybe lighting, making sure that signs like that are lit enough that people see them at night, and also that the park hours of operation signs are lit enough so that people can see. I think one of the comments had to do with that, that people don't, you know, if it's dark, they might not see the rules and regulations and that type of thing.
Are there any other comments? Can I entertain a motion to bundle the comments that were received as the feedback to the commission or the feedback to staff?
President Michaels, so the comments that I heard, just to be clear, were what Commissioner Wolfson mentioned. Is there others outside of those? So look at signs similar to be courteous to your neighbors and making sure that the hours of operation signs are lit and clear? Was there anything else that was mentioned?
I'd like to add, reaching out to Glendale PD and seeing if we can encourage the patrol officers to patrol at that time, as well as looking at the schedule or the options with our existing security to see what can be done without bringing on an additional security guard just for that task.
Good. Is there a motion and a second for that?
I move.
Okay. Commissioners, DeSartre and Absinthe, Calphayan?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
President Michaels?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 7B motion to note and file a report regarding an update on CSP enforcement of policies and suspensions.
Okay. At the last commission meeting, I believe it was President Michaels who wanted an update on the department's suspension policy and enforcement of policies. And so we've prepared a report, which is in your packet, and I have a brief PowerPoint. In December 2015, commission approved community services and park suspension policy establishing progressive discipline for various levels of offense. And this background is more for probably Commissioner Wolfson, who was not here at the time. And then in February of 2016, commission helped us finalize and the department's rules and regulations, which feeds into the suspension policy, which is the document that identifies the department's rules and regulations and classifies each rule under the level of offense to help determine the level of discipline depending on the rule that is violated. And the benefits were to better define the progressive levels of discipline, categorize the rules and regulations, the rules as levels of offense, provide a tool for the police department to help us enforce those rules. Because prior to having the rules in place and giving PD authority, they weren't necessarily able to do much if it wasn't a GMC violation or some sort of a state or federal law that was being broken. And so this way, PD is able to use our suspension forms to help us suspend individuals who are not following those rules, and also to strengthen the suspension procedures, not leaving much room for legal challenges from those being suspended. This is a quick chart of the enforcement of rules and regs, and this is kind of our suspension policy. And as you can tell, we've got the levels on one side and then the number of offense on the other. And so this is progressive discipline. So the first time somebody breaks a rule, let's say smoking, and that's considered a level two, the first time would be immediate removal. So staff would ask them to leave, or if it was a police officer that was there and it's a constant issue, then along with the ticket, they would be able to, they could, but they have, they won't be because PD issue suspensions for level three and above. Because a level two or a level one is less than 30 days, and PD suspension forms allow for a minimum of 30-day suspension. But so they would be able to help us enforce the rules in that sense. But the first time would be one-day exclusion. And then if that same person was back in the park three days later smoking, and we have documented that we've asked you to stop smoking and you're still smoking, it becomes a second offense, and so it becomes a 30-day suspension. And then, as you can see, a six-month and then a one-year exclusion. So by having progressive discipline, it actually allows us to be able to address some of the noise issues that may not be, you know, a GMC violation. But if, for example, in the Palmer situation, if there is a group of people or the same people that are constantly, they're playing after eight, the first time that would be a level one violation. A police officer or a staff person, if they were there, would ask them to please stop, you know, it's after eight, and they would give them a warning. The second time, it would be, last time we told you, now we're suspending you for a day. The third time, it would be. And so who enforces the rules? Well, at the community centers and certain parks, which there aren't that many unless we have a caretaker, it's staff that addresses the behavior and issue suspension notices. For parks that do not have employees on staff on site, staff depends on the community, so the residents or the patrons, to call in to the police department to report an issue, or the officers who are patrolling the parks to help us enforce the rules, or staff in route. So one of the park services staff or one of the recreation staff that might be there for programming. For example, at Palmer, when we, in the summer, when we have the waiting pool, if that employee was to see something, again, it's during, it's prior to eight, but if they were to see something, you know, they would also be able to address it by reaching out to a supervisor. But when there is staff on site, they're able to enforce the rules and we're able to issue the suspension notices. Of course, there's individuals who are not compliant or get aggressive. So staff is always encouraged to call police department for backup and assistance because sometimes we can't approach them. And if you do approach them, if they don't give you an ID, they don't tell you who they are. And I personally have had that experience when I'm at a park with my son and I've asked him to stop doing something, and if they don't listen or they talk back, well, I can't really get their information to suspend them, so I'll have to call a police officer for backup. In front of us is the suspension log. And so since we implemented the policy, we've included all the suspensions to date. And this is, I believe, as of December. So we have suspended 70, we've had 70 suspensions, of which 65 are unduplicated. So five of those, five of those suspensions are duplicated. It's the same person being suspended. And you could see the level of the suspension. So we've got one for nighttime camping. And if you look at the list, majority of them are level five. There's 33 total, which is a one-year suspension for selling, distributing, or use or possession of an illegal drug. And those are probably mostly the police department when they approach an individual or if they find they have drugs on them. So there have been total 70. And both staff and I think PD will agree that the policy has been very effective, and it has allowed us to suspend and keep out of the parks individuals who are constantly breaking the rules and in some situations, keeping them out. And if we do suspend them and they come back, then they're arrested for trespassing. So that also allows the police department to remove the individuals if they're not supposed to be there, even if it's a minor thing that they've done. But it allows them to be able to arrest for trespassing. That kind of concludes my presentation. I don't know if there are any specific questions, but again, from a staff perspective, and I think the police department will agree that the policy has been effective and we have been able to keep out repeat offenders of the rules and call on PD to assist us where necessary. So as I explained earlier, police department has suspension notices that they carry with them, and their suspensions are good for 30 days. And then staff in parks, the administration office, follows up after the police department issues those suspensions. And we either confirm the number of days, increase it, or reduce it. So if, for example, a police officer happens to suspend somebody for 30 days for a first violation for smoking because they have no other choice, their suspension is only good for 30 days. And we get the notice and we say, you know what? This is a first offense. It's really just a one day. Then staff will send a notice home and from the individual that your suspension has been reduced to one day. There is an appeal process as well. And so the individuals do get a fair appeal process and a hearing. And we have had six appeal requests to date. And I know that at least one of them, the suspension has been reduced after staff was able to look at further details. So the individuals do get a fair process, and staff does reevaluate the incident and, you know, hears and takes in the facts from the individual who was suspended, follows up with staff, follows up with the police department, and then makes a determination whether it really truly was a six-month or a one-year suspension, or should it be only a 30-day based on what conspired and what we have. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
One question I have. You say that follow-up to the suspension may be an arrest for trespassing. Are those arrests included with these numbers?
The arrests are not in these numbers, but they, because once the individual is, for example, if an individual is suspended for a year and they return to the park, we can't suspend them more than a year. And so they just get arrested for trespassing, and there's no need to. If the individual is suspended for 30 days and they come back and they get arrested, then police would follow up with, or we would then be notified and could follow up with a six-month suspension because they were now trespassing and breaking another rule. And so there might be some instances like that where they were arrested and then were issued a suspension for whatever it was the reason. If it was trespassing, then we would increase that suspension. So yes, it could be, but it also isn't fully reflective of that because they could have already been a one-year suspension, and so we can't suspend them for more than a year.
I was looking more at, you said there were six duplicated suspensions?
Mm-hmm.
And to see if, instead of a duplicated suspension, there was an arrest for trespassing, which would essentially add to that number of saying someone is continuing to violate the parks' rules.
President Michaels, what I meant by duplicated was that it was the same individual being suspended multiple times. So it could have been that the first time was a one-day suspension, the second time was a 30-day suspension, or a one-year depending on what it is, what rule they were violating. So there were 70 suspension notices issued, of which 65 were individuals, and the other five were repeat offenders. Does that help clarify?
A little bit. I may ask that question of Officer Kozas. If you understand my question, looking at the numbers here where someone, where you would suspend someone, and the next time you come out, the action is not a suspension but an arrest for trespassing, is there a way to look at those numbers to see if the suspension policy is effective in educating people so that there aren't more rules violations? Or if this is leading to more arrests for trespassing, which are not included in this, saying people are still continuing to violate the rules?
Right. I don't have the, sorry, President Michaels and members of the commission, I don't have arrest statistics for the parks related to violations of the suspension. I know that I personally have made several arrests for suspensions that I issued. So I issued a suspension for a rule violation. It could have been for as little as a small amount of marijuana, which is drugs in our parks. Smaller marijuana equals a year. So I know that that person's been suspended for a whole year. And two months later, I see them in a completely different park, sleeping on a bench, and I've woken them up, told them that they're in violation of the suspension, and taken them off to jail because, one, they've been served with the suspension personally. And so they have a piece of paper that says they know that they've been served and they cannot be in a park for a specific period of time. And basically, upon sight, if they're in any other park, then they can be arrested for the trespass. Because although it is a misdemeanor, there is a likelihood that it will continue. So that is something that we can book in our jail for, and we do. So I don't have the numbers for you, but my personal experience is that it's been very effective, if not on the first time going to jail for it, then the second. Basically, we've made our point that the park rules are what they are, and the suspensions are in place, and we mean it. We want the parks to be a nice, safe place for everyone to recreate and have fun. So if they've been suspended, we will hold them to it.
That answers my question of the efficacy of the graduated enforcement, if that, that it does, that that is effective.
Yes, absolutely. Now, as staff explained, officers do issue suspensions that are usually for level three and above. So you can see that's even being in a state of intoxication all the way up to committing some sort of misdemeanor or felony. So we typically suspend for those violations, which are a minimum of 30 days to begin with. The other rule violations, we typically support staff. So if they don't feel comfortable approaching the patron on a smoking violation, officer will be there for them to deliver that suspension just to keep the peace while they do it. We also do something similar for the libraries, which have similar rules.
Just to add to that, President Michaels, I was just looking at the chart, and you'll notice that under level three trespassing, we do have two suspensions for 30 days and three for a year. And so those are probably repeat offenders that were then, the suspensions were extended to a year. So in some instances, when they do get arrested and a second suspension notice is issued, then that is extended. The suspension is extended.
Is there a way we could have those suspensions broken down and tied to a specific park? I mean, I'm looking at the numbers of 70. I don't know exactly where these suspensions or violations are taking place. So I think it would help me personally to just kind of see where these suspensions are taking place and hopefully tie it to a particular park. And especially if, you know, we do see a high number of instances taking place, such as a Palmer Park, then we know, hey, there's definitely a problem. We are addressing it. So we could go and advise the residents that we are actively addressing it. PD's on it. Our staff is on it. And we have these mechanisms in place to mitigate those concerns. So I think that would help the residents, as well as staff and myself and this commission to kind of have it broken down if possible.
Mr. Wu, I know that staff does have all the data related to where the initial suspensions are issued. Now, subsequent arrests off of that one suspension can be at any of your parks. Once suspended from one, it's suspended from all. So a trespassing violation, while the initial suspension may have occurred at Carr Park, I might find them at Duke Magin, and they're in violation of the suspension.
I think that's great to know because then we know that if that person has currently been served with a suspension, that prohibits them from being at any of our parks.
Correct.
Palmer Park. So I think that's even further assurance to our residents that, hey, you know, if we do have, we did cite them, and this person has ongoing issues and they're in constant violation, then they're prohibited from any of our parks.
Yes, Commissioner Wu, if I can add on just a little bit there, you know, if we find that a patron is in violation of a law, we'll enforce that law, whether it's a citation or an arrest, and stack on top of it that suspension. of it that suspension. So that suspension then lasts, or lasts for that period of time, and at any of our parks. That helps with displacing certain nuisance problems. Oftentimes, as police officers, we will eliminate a nuisance in one particular spot, only for the problem to crop up in another, not that far away. So your suspension policy is very effective in that manner, in helping us with the displacement problem that we sometimes find as officers.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Wu, we do have the detail as to which parks it is. It's not included on the chart, but we're happy to break down that detail for you for future presentations, or even provide it for you for this one through email. I can tell you, for example, specifically, I was just scanning through my detail sheet, but in this reporting period, because this is until December of 2017, I noticed there was only one at Palmer Park, for example. So of the 71 was at Palmer Park, and majority of them, I think, have been Central Park, Maryland, or Chess Park. So those have been the parks that we've seen a lot more activity. But of course, the other parks are there as well, but we're happy to provide that detail for you for future presentations, as we do have it, we just didn't break it down for the specific one.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate your personal memory of being able to keep track of suspensions you may have issued. Can you explain to me the process of if you were to come across someone in the park, of how you would look to see if a suspension is in place, if it wasn't you as the officer who first set that first suspension?
Certainly. President Michaels, when an officer, any patrol officer, issues a suspension to a patron in the park, they're completing a paper form, which is triplicate. Before the officer finishes work for the day, they do data entry of that form into a database that we share with your department, with Community Services and Parks. So we send that data to them first electronically, and it puts it into a database that all patrol officers can share. After the park staff has validated the suspension, they keep that as part of the record, and that database is available to any patrol officer and our dispatchers anytime from any networked computer. So I could look at it at my desk, or I could look at it in a black and white car, or our dispatchers can look at it. Patrol officers can ask, if they're not at a car, dispatch, can you please check if this person's suspended from any parks? They will pull up that database, look for that person's name, and tell them yes or no, and when their privileges are restored to be in the park.
I'm glad that's part of this process.
I think she needs a motion.
I think this is note and file, correct?
That is correct.
I did have just one other question of staff with the appeal process. Has staff mentioned, which was not in the report, that only one appeal reduced the period of suspension? Without going into specific details or about individuals, can you give me an impression of how that appeal process has functioned? If people feel that the suspensions were onerous, or if they believe that they now understand the rules and understand why the suspension was made?
President Michaels, I think for the individual whose suspension was reduced, of course, they were happy that they had the opportunity to appeal and were given that opportunity. But I think for others, it's fair to say that we try to do our best to explain to them which rule they've broken and why, and make sure that they understand, you know, the facts that we have and/or the evidence that we have that was either presented by the police department or park staff. And they, for the most part, I think, they understand and just are thankful for the opportunity to be able to appeal. I just recall one incident, but that doesn't mean that's the only incident where it was reduced. There could have been more of the six. I was just personally involved with that specific hearing. But we do have another staff person who has come on board and is handling hearings now, but we're, I think that it does give them a fair opportunity, and for the most part, they understand and go back. And it's sad to say, but I believe majority of them have been transients, like homeless individuals in the parks that have been suspended, and then they come in to appeal because of whatever reasons that they have. Either they weren't doing what either staff or PD observed, or it wasn't them. And so, again, we give them a fair opportunity to present their side of the story and show us what they have, or if they have any evidence or anything, again, depending on what rule they're violating. And then we go from there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I move to note and file the report regarding the updated CSP.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioners, Satchin, Zapson, Kafian?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
President Michaels?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next is item eight, reports information only at A Verdugo Skate Park Annual Report.
Good afternoon, President Michaels and members of the commission. I'm Gabrielle Golia, a senior supervisor with the Recreation Section. I'm here to present to you the annual Verdugo Skate Park report. This is for the reporting period of October 1st, 2016, through September 30th of 2017. The Verdugo Skate Park celebrated its 13th anniversary this year. We opened on April 17th of 2004. It is a 15,000-square-foot skate park, and we have multiple features, making it a destination for skating in Southern California. We offer group and private instructional lessons. We have a Friday Night Lights program, which is a free program for youth to drop by, play video games, hang out and skate in a safe and supervised environment. And we have our Summer Travel Skate Camp, which has become very popular and is quite successful. And we do offer film permits. We can't really determine when films will come to us, but we've had various different films and commercials shot there. We have some street course portions of the skate park. We also have a snake run, a kidney bowl, and people really like the tile and coping that's on our bowls. They think that it gives it a really traditional Southern California feel from the origins of skating in the empty swimming pools back in the 80s. Not the origins, but when it became very popular here in Southern California. The Verdugo Skate Park is open daily from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and we're open 12 hours, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays. Programming is expanded during the Glendale Unified School District's summer break. We go 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily during the summer break for the kids. In this reporting period, the average attendance was 13. That is down from last year, where average attendance per day was 16. 63% of our participants were youth, and we had $9,211 brought in from entrance fees, the remainder of our revenue, I'll go over in a moment the sources of it. Use of the Verdugo Skate Park was free to all participants until August of 2005. At that time, we began charging adult, non-resident users of the park. So from 2005 until October of 2012, the only people who paid a $2 entrance fee were non-resident adults. Back in 2012, the department began charging fees to all participants who entered the park. This was to offset more of the operating expenses to staff the park. We did, we had a 74% cut in budget at that time to this particular program, and we surveyed everybody who came into the park for an entire month before this happened, in July of 2012. Every single person who came in had to fill out a survey telling us what their thoughts were on entrance fees versus not staffing the park versus closing the park at that point in time was on the list of options. And at that point in time, 72% of the people preferred paying an entrance fee to keep the park staffed during all of our operating hours, rather than keeping it open but unstaffed or closing it entirely. We have seen a drop in participation since 2012, as to be expected when you start charging fees, where there weren't necessarily fees before. The last annual participation figure, when we started charging fees in October 2012, was a little over 13,000, or quite a bit over 13,000 people total per year. So this year's participation for drop-in was 4,690 people. So the programs that we offer at the skate park, we continue to offer all of these programs. We have skate classes, which we have both beginning and intermediate skate classes offered on the weekend mornings. They are $100 for a six-week session. We did have 39 participants in this reporting period. It is down from the last reporting period. However, we believe that a lot of that drop is due to an increase in the beginning travel skate camp, where we offer lessons as part of the skate camp, and that participation has really shot up. We also have drop-by classes, which don't require any registration. People can just walk up. We'll take up to five children per day, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, for $20 per class. And that allows a parent who might be there for the first time to try it out and see if they like the classes before signing up for one of our other programs. As I mentioned earlier, we have the Friday Night Lights program offered the third Friday of every month. And every year in June, we have the International Go Skateboarding Day celebration. We have, the staff will reach out to all of the organizations here in Glendale that have skating goods and gear, and we have donations from all the skate shops and the companies, and we do a free skateboarding competition that day to celebrate the International Day. We do have our skate camps. We have the Beginning Groms Camp, which has skating instruction and onsite activities. They go on a weekly excursion, and they also go swimming weekly. And then we have the Intermediate and Advanced Shredders Camp. They travel to four different skate parks in Southern California per week, as well as skating at the Verdugo Skate Park, and they also go on the same weekly excursion and weekly swimming trip. We had a 41% increase in revenue for skate camps this summer, so it was very popular. We brought in over $27,000 for the skate camp program. So that program has really seen a boom in participation, and we have a lot of returned customers who are very happy with it. The fees for the travel skate camp are $225 per week for the Beginning Groms, $325 per week for shredders, and we offer before and/or after care for $20 a week. The main camps are from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Before and after care is combined with the Verdugo Day Camp program, and that allows a parent who's working to have care between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So you can see, this is the breakdown of our revenue sources. The skate park is operated partially out of the general fund and partially out of the special revenue fund. We do operate at a loss in the special revenue fund. This is, we know going into it that it will be operated at a loss, and it's one of the programs that the department has determined, although it's in the red, we will continue to support it with revenue and profits that are brought in from other programs. Our community outreach is through our department newsletter, our city's webpage, and our quarterly leisure guide. And we also rely on outside sources that we don't necessarily have control over, but they advertise for us. One in particular is the Concrete Disciples website, which is a skating website. So we can go on there and we can ask them to change information if it's incorrect, but they advertise for us as they list all of the skate parks in Southern California where people can go. And that is it for my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. On slide seven, you had listed the residence fee per week. What is the non-resident fee?
There actually isn't a non-resident fee. We realized right as we were about to present this that it had the resident versus non-resident up there, and there isn't a non-resident fee. So that's actually the fee for all participants in the camp. That we, this particular camp, it's a specialty camp, so the non-resident rates haven't applied to it. We only applied those to the regular day camps that were primarily for childcare sources. But the specialty camps, such as sports, skate park, and contract class camps, don't have a non-resident rate.
Okay. And then the before and after care is $20 per week, so two hours before or after and five days of the week?
Commissioner Wu, yes, the rate is $20 for before care, and then if they would also like after care, it's an additional $20. So if they needed before and after, it would be a $40 per week fee for Monday through Friday care.
So it'd be 10 hours for the week, and it'd be $2 an hour?
Correct.
Okay. And then slide eight, you said that it's operating in the red, so how much is in the red?
President Michaels and Commissioner Wu, the skate park operated with a loss of $40,042 in the red this year. Last year's operating loss was $32,135.
And the year before that?
I believe I have that. Oh. $35,000? Approximately $35,000. I'm sorry, I don't have a calculator.
No, the only reason I ask is because I wanted to see if there's a trend of constant increase from year to year, and if it went from 35 to 32 and then up to 40. Okay.
There has been a slight increase. Some of that is due to our drop in participation in the daily figures, although our revenue and participation in the camps has gone up, the expenses that goes along with operating a camp has increased as well. So there has been an increase in the loss over the past couple of years, yes.
So then it will be realistic for us to think that it's going to be even higher this year?
I think that would be an assumption that, yes, that could happen. We are looking and analyzing in this budget cycle what we want to do, knowing that there has been a consistent drop in the participation from the daily drop-in, and that will be part of the staff's evaluation of the program as we go into the next budget year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item?
Next is item eight B, Mobile Recreation Program Annual Report.
Once again, good afternoon, President Michaels, commissioners and city staff. My name is Melanie Amazosian, Community Services Coordinator with Pacific Community Center, and today I'm going to be reviewing the Mobile Recreation Annual Report for Party on the Go and Glendale Rocks. So a little bit of the background for Mobile Rec. Our Mobile Recreation Program currently consists of Party on the Go and Glendale Rocks. Both programs are available for reservation seven days a week at any of our Glendale parks and facilities, as well as private residence, business, or organization within the city of Glendale and Locust Center limits. It was last year in August 2016 where CSP staff began to see an opportunity to combine Party on the Go with facility reservations to offer a combined all-in-one party package that offered sport-themed basketball and soccer party packages. And since I already conduct facility reservations at Pacific Community Center, it was easy to combine both of them. So our Party on the Go packages includes our standard Party on the Go package, which is two hours of staff-led games and activities up to 12 kids, and it serves within the Glendale and Locust Center areas. Our Party on the Go Package A is our basketball-themed package, which consists of the use of the gym beat at Pacific Community Center for two and a half hours, two staff-led activities for up to 24 kids, and two themed arts and crafts for themed sports activities. Our Package B is our soccer package, which includes the use of the multipurpose field for two hours, and a use of the picnic shelter for two and a half hours, two staff-led activities for up to 24 kids, and arts and crafts themes for sport-themed activities. So in 2017, for Party on the Go, it was rented 15 times. Out of those 15 times, eight were interdepartmental special events, some of which included the annual Cesar Chavez Commemorative Event, our Spring Extravaganza, Cruise Night, National Night Out, Glendale Fire Service Day, Glendale Police Department, and the, pardon, that's the, I'm jumping ahead, that's the Glendale Rocks. For Pongo, it was rented a total of 13 times. Eight of them were for private events, and five were city-sponsored events, which include Cesar Chavez Commemorative Event, our Cruise Night, Spring Extravaganza, Ciclovia, and the city's first inaugural fall festival. Next, we have our jumping ahead, that's the Glendale Rocks. For Pongo, it was rented a total of 13 times. Eight of them were for private events, and five were city-sponsored events, which include Cesar Chavez Commemorative Event, our Cruise Night, Spring Extravaganza, Ciclovia, and the city's first inaugural Fall Festival. Next, we have our Glendale Rocks packages. So our standard package for the Glendale Rocks Climbing Wall, it's a combined two-hour of who can climb to the wall the fastest, and it comes with two staff, wall gear and equipment. And again, it's rented within Glendale and Locust Center area limits. And our Package A, our party package, is a use of Pacific Community Center Gym A or Gym B for two and a half hours, and it includes the wall, two staff, wall gear and equipment, and then tables and chairs for rentals for the party. So our Glendale Rocks rentals, now it's, as I was jumping ahead, it was rented a total of 15 times, and eight of those were interdepartmental special events, which included Cesar Chavez, Extravaganza, Cruise Night, National Night Out, Fall Festival, and the Glendale Police Department Open House. Five of those reservations were for private events that took place at a Glendale park or facility. Two of the reservations were for Glendale Unified School District use, which was, one included the Glendale Triple ELP Field Day Event and Tole Middle School's 8th Grade Celebration. So the Mobile Recreation Program brought in a revenue of $4,790 in 2017. Taking into account of hourly salaries, benefits, and maintenance and operation of the wall, our expenditures were a total of $2,383, which leaves a net profit of $2,407. And in comparing that to 2017, we came in under at $691 precisely. So the various ways we market the Mobile Recreation Program is included in our leisure guide, our seasonal wrap-up, which is distributed to all the Thursday folders in all of the Glendale Unified School District elementaries, word of mouth, our city website, department and city newsletter, brochures at citywide events, Glendale Unified School District PTAs and foundations. They also blasted on their websites as well, GTV6 advertisement, our Parks Make Life coloring book, which was passed out to everyone earlier, Facebook and Twitter, and the banners, which we hook on to the climbing wall, if you've noticed, right next to, on top of them, one is the Mobile Recreation Program. And if you're planning a party with us, please contact me. I'm available. And looking forward to booking more party packages in the future. That concludes my party, my presentation, and I've taken any questions at this time.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next is item 8C, Section Activity Reports. At one is Workforce Development.
Good afternoon, President Michaels, Members of the Commission. My name is Melissa Yunessian, and I manage the Verdugo Job Center. I'm here to present on behalf of Judith Velasco and behalf of Workforce Development on the funding we received on Measure H. As you can see from the report that was submitted to you, the Measure H funding we received came from LA County homeless programs to assist 13 individuals who are homeless to go through a paid work experience program. These individuals will be going through the Verdugo Job Center. They will be receiving case management, job placement assistance, but we will be working with providing 165 hours of work experience on our park site, going out with Coco's team to clean up the parks, the restrooms, the facilities. They will have an onsite supervisor that we will be providing. They will go through two weeks of soft skills training at our site first, and then they will go out to the public. And we will be providing also breakfast and lunch for them, supportive service clothing, boots, et cetera. The hope is that we will be able to provide them a transitional period for them to go through from homelessness, from any of the continuum of care programs that they're in, to get this work experience and assist them in obtaining employment and permanent housing. So with that, we currently have six individuals. The program for 13 are supposed to be in two cohorts, a cohort of six and a cohort of seven. So we do have the six already. We are aiming at starting the program at the end of this month, and within the next 12 weeks, we'll start the second cohort with the seven individuals. I will be more than happy to take any questions. Yes, sir?
I have a question. Do you provide shelter for the homeless also at the same time?
No, we don't. They are currently in a shelter program. We are working with Essentia and other continuum of care programs at the city, so they will currently have some type of housing.
Do we recruit them from the Essentia or other places?
Yes.
Or we don't go on the streets? We don't recruit them?
We recruit them from Essentia and the other programs. We've also spoken to other community organizations. They do also come into the Verdugo Job Center as well, and Officer Kozak has also referred clients that he has come across through his efforts.
President Michaels, Members of the Commission, all of the participants will go through a vetting process. They'll, we are doing background checks and working with Essentia, all of our shelter plus care clients, rapid rehousing clients that are part of our COC continuum of care programs. Also, staff, Melissa, and the caseworkers have been working closely with all of our homeless service providers to see what type of clients and who is interested in being employed and learning basically landscape maintenance, park maintenance, and so on, in the hopes they would grow, you know, within an organization or within a landscaping company.
Those are drug-free?
Yes, they do have to go through background check and drug test. We are currently waiting on the background check clearance on four, and two of them are going through it as we speak.
Do we test them as they are being trained in the program? Do we have a testing program?
What type of test? For the drugs or skills? Yes, they will be, yes.
I have a two-part question. So like, how are these 13 individuals selected? And this $100,000 that you guys receive, is that for a year timeframe, or is it for the whole duration? And how long is that duration?
So first question, the way we assess the clients that come to us is, that was the question, right?
Yeah, 13 individuals are selected?
We do, we do get the direct referrals from possibly any of the case managers they have. So for example, Essentia has their job development team. So the job developers who have already been meeting with these clients and know their background, know their skills, and what they're looking for, they are the individuals who will refer them to us and let us know about the client and their barriers or their goals. So once they come to us, we do have staff that meets with them individually. We go through another session of assessing their needs and their skills and barriers, and we address those additional barriers as well by providing services and resources to them. So ideally, you know, it's someone, as Mr. Boyanikin mentioned, it's someone that is either interested in going into this type of a field, or is ready to, you know, get a permanent position hopefully once this is done. Because we also see a lot of issues with individuals who have a lack of work history, or if there are gaps. So this will really assist them in showing current work history as well. And that way, it will also assist the parks in their cleanup as well. And your second question, the funding is going to be until June 30th of 2018. We received the funding in, excuse me, in October of 2017. So the hope is that once we, by June 30th, once we are successful in the program, we would be able to request for additional funding from LA County.
For the same 13 individuals or new set of individuals?
New cohorts that will come through.
And are these trainings or assistance, are they all for native-speaking individuals only, or how about if you don't speak the language?
No, it's not only for native-speaking assistants, as long as we are, if we know whatever the language preference is, and if we are able to provide that assistance on the field, as long as they can see and they understand what they need to do, that shouldn't be a problem.
I have one more question. If someone walks to any of us and says, "I'm homeless, and I need to, and I went to Essentia, and they don't have a space," and so on, where do we send them?
For housing?
For housing and the program.
Okay, so they can be referred to the Verdugo Job Center directly? We'll be able to assist them with either providing resources for any type of shelter or housing assistance, and also we'll work with them on helping them get on the road to obtaining employment, and possibly even if they see that they have a need for going back to school to get some type of training, we will be able to assist that as well. So you can definitely direct them to the Verdugo Job Center, which is located at 1255 South Central, yes.
When you say any type of shelter, what other resources we have?
President Michaels, Members of the Commission, we have a number of programs and nonprofits that we work with that are part of our continuum of care. The city's Homeless Services Program is run out of the, our department, Community Services and Parks, and we have our own continuum of care. Our coordinated entry system organization, our main one is Essentia. And Essentia, they're, they have, I believe, 80 beds per night. But if a client comes to you and asks, "I need to, I need somewhere to stay," they should contact our Homeless Services section. We also work with Catholic charities, family promise of the, family promise of the Verdugos, and we'll either get them housed in a motel for a night or two, or have them participate in our rapid rehousing. It all depends on where they rank as defined by HUD, our Urban Housing and Development. So it all depends. There's a number of factors. But the best thing for them to do is call our Homeless Services Program, and we'll refer them to the appropriate agency that deals with homelessness.
How about if they are with a drug, they are addicted to drugs, and do we have rehab centers that we refer them to?
We'll refer them to rehab centers.
We do have that service?
We will refer them, but they need to be open to those services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, President Michaels and the Members of the Commission, one other thing that Commissioner Wu asked in regards to the budget. Staff did request a little over $300,000 when we met with LA County Workforce Development, and they asked us to hold off and take baby steps. That's why they provided $100,000 for 13 clients. Our initial request was to employ 50. Once when they see the effectiveness and the popularity of the program, we hope that next year at this time, or a little earlier, maybe in July, we can ask for additional funding. This is funded through Measure H. Our Measure H allocations would be $100,000 for this program, and we're hoping to get another $273,000 direct allocation to our COC for different strategies that we're working on to combat homelessness.
Are we ready for the next item?
Next on the agenda is 8C2, Recreation and Community Services.
President Michaels, Members of the Commission, I know we have a few more minutes, but we do have our recreation report and park service report in your packets. If you have any questions regarding any of the information, Mr. Garbidian or Mr. Ponosian are here to answer your questions.
Are there any questions? Let's move on to the next item.
The next item was 8C3, Park Services. But if you don't have any questions, next is adjournment.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
You don't need a motion, but thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.